Yeah, there is a gain on it. But I'm worried about there being a mute function. Okay. No, I don't see the sort of mute. There's no thing? Where, what? Well, I, I gained it all the way up. I don't know if it's not, where's that signal? You think we might be doing reset? Second like snap. That's a really bad place for us to be. Red, but although.
I'm going to invite my school board colleagues to come to the stage. Thank you, everyone. Good evening, everyone. The regular meeting of the Kansas City Public Schools Board of Directors for September 11th is called to order. Welcome, everyone, to Central High School, and we are thrilled to be here this evening. This is one of our quarterly off-site school board meetings that we've made a practice of doing over the past three and a half years or so, where we take our regular school board meeting off-site around the community as a way to showcase our schools, to highlight our staff, and to honor the community members and nonprofit partners and other groups that are part of this school community. So, we're delighted to be here. Before we begin, I'm going to ask the secretary to please call the roll.
Ms. Mancer?
Here.
Mr. Abarka? Ms. Cortez?
Here.
Mr. Hogan?
Here.
Dr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Wasserstrom?
Here.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Here.
Thank you. I want to ask my colleagues to take a look at the agenda, and is there any objection to the approval of the agenda? It would be in order to receive a motion for acceptance of the agenda as presented.
It's been moved in seconded.
Secretary will please call the roll.
Ms. Mancer?
Yes.
Mr. Abarka? Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Ms. Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wasserstrom?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Thank you. At this time, the chair recognizes Dr. Bedell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As we begin to open up this meeting, we will have our welcome from the principal. And Principal Madri, I know as you approach, we also want to move forward with our posting of the colors. So, I'll go ahead and allow for you to take charge at this point, and then proceed with your presentation.
Good evening. Good evening, Dr. Bedell. Board President, Ms. Mancer, our esteemed board, I'd like to welcome you all to Central High School. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Samantha Lopez, our commander of the JRTC. Would everyone please stand?
Colors. Forward march. Mark sign, march. Colors, halt. Uncaring, colors. Right, face. Post, colors. Reason, arms.
Would everyone join in with me with a pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with never ceasing justice.
Order, arms. Left, face. Forward, march!
Which one? Oh, okay.
Post, arms. Forward, march!
You all may be seated. I want to welcome all of you all to Central High School. On behalf of the faculty and staff and the administrative team here, I want to thank each and every one of you all for coming, and I want to welcome the central community. I see a lot of familiar faces, and I want to thank each and every one of you for being here. So, let me give you a little bit about the history of Central. As I've said, I'm Anthony Madri, the principal. Central's been here since the early 1800s, from what we're understanding. We're doing a little research, a little homework, trying to figure out exactly when Central was actually established. We thought it was 1884, but we're starting to find out that it's maybe a little earlier than 1884. We changed the name this upcoming, this school year to Central High School, where it had been changed in the past, because Central has one of the greatest traditions and greatest histories that you can ever imagine. To have a great, like Walt Disney go to school here, to have Casey Stiegl, and to have multiple Olympians go here, it is a beautiful thing. So, Central was once upon a time the mecca of this community. Since my arrival in 2016, we've achieved gains in attendance, we've decreased discipline, we had our first student score of three on his AP exam, we had four students receive scholarships from Casey Scholars last year, and the overall improvement of the campus culture and climate has been exceptional. The amenities that we offer are a great swimming pool, which is an Olympic-sized pool with diving. We also have a great gymnasium, wonderful classrooms, library, and Greek theater that you all are enjoying this evening. And then the overall architectural design of this building is something to marvel at. So, this upcoming November, we'll be hosting the intramural games, and that's the school district schools playing against one another. I believe it's Slade's team playing against Jackson, and we're going to see who comes out on top. I'm rooting Slade. No offense to subjects.
They have some board members that want to compete, too.
Okay, okay. So, we're inviting you out. So, some of the upgrades. Central Field was upgraded in 2017, when we played our first home game on turf. That field was a dusty grass field, and it was upgraded to turf, and our students in that year, they won a share of the district title for the first time in many, many years. We opened up Jack Bush Court in that same year, that December. Jack Bush was a longstanding basketball coach here that took Central to, to Central, to the title game multiple occasions, and I think he went, reached the final four on 11 different occasions. And then the name change. The name change was a long time coming. When I was hired in 2016, Aola Riley of the Central Alumni Foundation came to me the first day on the job and said, "I need three things. I need to know how long you are going to stay, I need to know what you're going to do, and then I need to know if you're going to change the name back for us." And so, we successfully went through the process and changed the name back to Central High School this year. The establishment of organizations. We have Women's Empowerment. We saw that our young ladies lacked opportunities to participate on the campus level. Sorry. Thank you. We saw that our young ladies lacked opportunities to participate on the campus level. So, we developed a program called Women's Empowerment, where they do a lock-in, then they have multiple opportunities throughout the year to be a part of professional opportunities or programs, and that's headed by Linda Wilson, one of our English teachers. Awesome Ambitions is another program that we gear towards our ladies, and it's headed by Cynthia Newsom of Channel 41. In 2017, being a former band director, I recognized that we would love to have a great music program here, and we established our marching band again after 10 years of absence. We now have a chamber choir, we have a gentleman by the name of Val Yang that is now pushing our chamber choir, and we have students that are performing throughout the city. Our Teacher of the Year, Tamea Morgan, established a program called the Central Spoken Word. Spoken Word is something that's growing throughout the communities, and with her being an English teacher and loving the poetry, the element of poetry, we have developed a poetry system where she's going to be hosting spoken word programs four times a year, and then monthly to the students. And then the re-establishment of our Student Council. Our Student Council was pretty much non-existent when I got here in 2016, but D'Amico Woods, one of my former teachers, reestablished that Student Council. And this past week, we had elections for our new officers, and if you could have seen the excitement, they got their stickers, they used the polling place that had computers, all the above. And then, last but not least, the Ignited Pens. Charlotte Wafer, our instructional coach, looks at writing as a, not just a practice, but she looks at it as a way for students to truly express themselves and go to another level of their academic achievement. Athletic Opportunities. Our football team was pretty much non-existent when I got here. We had 12 students for a sport that needs at least 22 students to, to have scrimmages. They won district, or they had a share of the district crown my second year. Our volleyball team, after two years, we were able to make it into the playoffs. Our basketball team went five and 18 my first year, and that's the men's program. Last year, they made a deep run into the state. Our girls' basketball team, that first year, that was here in 2016, we were lucky to have six kids to come out and play and compete. Last year, they went to the playoffs. Cross-country and track and field, I don't have to say anything about them. They're still at the top of the game here in the Kansas City area, and once again, we have some great coaches that are leading those programs. Our athletic director, Deandre Campbell, is the gentleman that's leading our track and field program. Baseball made a milestone last year by winning its first playoff game in more than 10 years. Wrestling, we have a strong wrestling program. My secretary, Samantha Richardson, was one step away from being on the Olympic team for wrestling. She took a young man to the, to the wrestling state competition in 2017, 18. This year, we're making concerted effort to build our swim program. We have worked to find a great swim coach by the name of Skip Hill, and Skip Hill is nationally recognized, and he's looking to build swim from elementary through middle all the way to high school. Our soccer programs are growing. Our girls made it to the playoffs last year, and it was their first year competing. Dance and cheer, not a lot to say about them, because they're great programs. Our cheer squad currently works over at the soccer stadium, and they do concessions, and they're doing their fundraising with the soccer program, the professional soccer team here, and it's a beautiful thing to watch those young ladies go out and work and earn money to, to push their program forward. Pillars of success. In 2016, there was a need for childcare. We found that we had almost 30 children or students that needed childcare, and they had, either they were pregnant, or they had kids already. At that time, Darrell Davis, Dr. Darrell Davis was my assistant superintendent, and when I spoke with him about it, he reached out to Jared Kitzey, and in that conversation, we were able to establish the Central Early Childhood Facility. And in that time, we started looking to see how could we connect with the community. Urban Tech, Ina Montgomery, came into my office and said, "Hey, I think I got something you would like. I believe she's going to be recognized here tonight, so I want to give her another shout out as well." 2017, we recognized that we had a large, significant issue with violence in the community. We, we established Project Safe and Green Dot. In 2018, 19, we saw there was a need for assistance with eviction, so we did an establishment with the legal department, and we put justice in the schools program to fight these evictions. In the spring of 2019, Samara Crawford-Horero and her team walked into my office and said, "Hey, we want to talk," and they wanted to bring family engagement to the building. We wanted to bring wraparound services, and so therefore, the Family Engagement Department moved right into the family empowerment vein. Future programs that we're looking at, Synergy is working with us to address the homelessness, children's mercy, medical needs for our students, and as all of you all know, Swoop does a great job with mental health services. We have collective commitments, and that's what drives our school forward. They're student-driven, and they're 100% committed by the, and approved by the faculty, staff, and support members of our team. And then they're implemented by all. And when I say implemented by all, we all take responsibility for attendance, we all take responsibility for behavior and academic achievement. The vision of Central, love, honor, respect. You have to love the students that go to school here, because they're going to love you back if you love them. You have to honor the commitment you made to be a member of this staff, and then you have to respect where they come from. Lastly, the human capital. No one wants to come to a filthy building. Thanks to Lizelle and Eli, we were able to get Jeremy Speed, who's Custodian of the Year. No, our building's not exactly where we want it to be. We want it to look brand-new, but Jeremy does a great job getting our building where we want it. I don't perform very well when I'm hungry. Our food manager, Twala Dulent, makes sure that our students are served appropriately. Jeffrey Dayton, our trauma-sensitive school clinician, is one of the pillars of success in this building, because our building's on fire some days, where they have things that they're coming, the students have things they're coming in here with, and that they need to get it off their chest. Then Zaja Addison has made it her personal mission to make sure students come to school. And last but not least, Officer Jonathan Berry of Security does a great job making sure that people feel safe when they come in our building. I'd like to thank Dr. Cordova, Marcus Harris, and Jeffrey Gilmore for providing great security training for these folks that are in our building. Then last but not least, the administrative team does a great job supporting me and the teachers that are here in this building, and that's Gwendolyn Letty, Michael Robbins, Anthony Holland, Charlotte Wafer is our instructional coach. Last, I'd like to bring up Tanika Renti. She is the teacher for Jobs for American Graduates. It's the number-one CTE program in the state of Missouri. Tanika, would you come up, please? And with the help of some of our ROTC, we'd like to give our gift, our school board members' product of our work, our students put together some t-shirts for you guys, hot off the presses here at Central High School. So, I'd like, like to present those to you on behalf of the students of the JAG program. So, there you have it. Since you're in Central, or since you're at Central, I'd like for you to say it with me. On the count of three, read the screen, and it says, "I Will, I Can, I Am, Central." Y'all ready? One, two, three. I will, I can, I am central.
Are there any questions for my colleagues? Any comments?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
So, one, incredible, right? Like, I could go through the list, and the things that stood out for me were, you know, better attendance, the improved discipline, the athletics focus, and the tremendous amount of success early on with some of these new teams in the, in the school, the overall list of pillars of success, right? I could go on and on and on. What I, I think would be interesting to hear is, if you had to boil down the two or three areas of, or two or three things that helped you be successful, what would they be?
I said them in the presentation. Love, honor, respect. Our students don't care how much you know until they know how much you care. You got to love them. You got to love on their heart. If they don't care, if they don't know that you care about them, they're not listening. They're not going to talk to you. The honor, the commitment, we honor the commitment to educate every kid that walks through this door. Disability doesn't matter. Color doesn't matter. Age does not matter. We educate every student that walks through our door. And then the respect. People think I'm saying that the students have to respect me. No, I must respect them. I have to respect where they come from. Each student has my personal cellphone number. Text me. If there's a problem, text me. I don't want any excuses. Text me. So, those three words, those three things. If we don't do those three things, we don't move forward.
So, I also want to throw out something to the, to our colleagues here, because I think this is interesting. I mean, if you look out in the audience, and I saw this at the last on-the-road school board meeting as well, the participation when we come to schools is so much higher than when we sit at BOE. And so, I wonder if there's an opportunity for us to get further out into the community in these schools, and I know it's a heavy lift for Dr. Bedell's team, right? Because of the audio, and the video, and the travel, and the food, and all those good things, but if this is what it takes to get community members like this out and engaged with the school board, I think we should really seriously consider that.
Are there any other comments or questions for the?
Yeah, I have a, I'm sorry. All right, so I just wanted to publicly commend you and your team in here. Today, we had an opportunity to participate in the 911 honoring of a lot of our fallen, not only soldiers, but even citizens, based on what happened back in New York. And you had every single one of your students come out in front of the building during that presentation, and the respect that those students displayed for their peers, because the peers in the ROTC were the ones that really ran that program, it was phenomenal. Anybody who sits here and wants to try to characterize the kids that attend this school in a negative way, I have significant problems with that. I spent a lot of time over here with these students. I play basketball with them on Saturdays. These are students that genuinely will lower their guards if they feel that they trust you, and that you hold them to a high level of standard. They will rise to that. They will. And so, you know, I get upset as a superintendent when I constantly hear people always approaching Central High School through a deficit lens, but if people would have had an opportunity to observe what I observed today, I couldn't be any prouder about where these, this school is heading and what these kids are doing. So, we have a lot of work to do. We put a lot of controls in for the variables that often serve as impediments to these students being able to reach their fullest academic potential, but we're on our way. And today was a prime example of that, so I want to give Mr. Madri and his administration huge kudos for what I was able to observe today.
Thank you, Dr. Bedell, and thank you, Mr. Madri. Ms. Wolfsee?
I wasn't going to say anything, but now I will. I met you when you first came in 16, 17, but I have been to Central many times before, and I just want to send out also another general observation. A lot of times, things are not about one person. So, as much as I love you, Mr. Madri, yes, you are the catalyst, but I think you rightly pointed out that the first day you were here, the alumni president was also talking to you. So, this school has such a rich history of alumni, students, like Dr. Bedell just said, faculty and staff, because I think one of your first years here I came, and I was thoroughly impressed with the staff back then. And it's really, it's, and then the parents and the families that are also a part of this. It really is everything, it is never just one. It's likely there's a catalyst or a catalytic moment, but I think everybody needs to recognize your part in the equation of where, how you've gone as a school from maybe a few years ago to now, and to this point at which I would actually hold you up as one of the schools that we would like all of our schools to be like, to have that climate and culture that you feel when you actually step through the security thing. It's, I feel it east, I feel it at Central, I feel it at Southeast, and I, I want you to know that it is palpable to those of us that either do have a relationship with the school, or those that don't.
Thank you.
Thank you again. It's wonderful to be here. We're delighted and so happy that this was our location for this meeting. So, thank you, Mr. Madri.
Very glad to have you.
The next item of business is our workshop presentation. The chair recognizes our superintendent, Dr. Bedell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you all know, this is an opportunity for the district administration and the board to recognize our scholar-superstars, terrific teammates, and community champions. And so, for this part of the agenda, I will now pass it over to Justin Robinson, our Director of Communications.
Thank you, Dr. Bedell. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the school board. Tonight, we're going to do something a little different for our superintendent recognitions. Instead of me standing up here and stumbling through my script and butchering up names, we actually went out and got video of our scholar-superstars and our terrific teammates. And so, our first scholar-superstar, Ms. Deja Brooks from Central High School.
Deja's personality makes her an amazing student. Every single day she walks into my classroom, she has a smile on her face, and she is ready to help her classmates, to help me, to just do what it takes, and I really appreciate that.
One of the things that makes Deja Brooks a great student here at Central is that she leads from the front. Deja sits in the front of the classroom, she's one of the students, very attentive class, and she's involved in just about every initiative that we have available to her. Deja's a part of one of the classes, which is a part of the Awesome Ambitions program. Deja was brought this, this month by her peers as the Scholar of the Month, and she seems to be a fabulous student, or Scholar of the Month.
I believe that Deja has shown how hard she works, how driven she is, and I believe that she doesn't stand down just where she is here.
When people think of Deja, we, we think of how excited she is when we see her in the lunchroom, we see her in her classrooms, but more than anything, the level of commitment. Central's C, and that C carries over to the commitment that she brings to Central and that she brings to this community. Ms. Brooks was not able to make it today, so we'll give her certificate to her principal. Next, we have Ms. Jasmine Johnson and Samaya Hawthorne of George Melcher Elementary School.
Jasmine is a very bright student. I believe that she is extremely attentive, and if she doesn't understand something, she's going to respectfully ask a question until she understands it. And... And she is a great example of someone who is, really, really cares about her education.
I believe Samaya is a very diligent and meticulous type of student when it comes to math skills. She is very knowledgeable as far as basic skills, she's got those down, she's really a quick learner. She loves to learn new things, and when she learns it, she's got it for the first time. She's very responsible with turning her assignments in, asking questions, not allowing me to pass her by when she's unclear about something. She's very, just overall, the type of student that every teacher wants in their class.
Jasmine and Samaya Hawthorne were not able to make it today, so we're gonna give to Ms. Jasmine, the principal, at Melcher. Now for our terrific teammates. Our first terrific teammate is a custodian at Paxton Elementary School, Chaney Lynn. Let's take a look.
We were so excited to nominate Ms. Chaney. She does her job every day with such pride. We love Ms. Chaney at Paxton Elementary.
It's really important for all of Paxton students to see staff members as all part of the learning community. And Ms. Chaney, being part of our maintenance staff, she was willing to come into our rooms and help talk to our students about her experience being from Cambodia. We got a connection, 'cause last year I taught in Cambodia, and so together we're excited to plan a unit for our students. From the moment I met Ms. Chaney, I could feel and see how much she cared about the Paxton students here at Paxton. She was always willing to help make sure our learning environments were ready for the next day, and to share her personal experience so our students are ready to grow as globally-minded students.
And Samaya is here now, so she can take a picture as well. Can we get one more round of applause for Ms. Lynn and Ms. Hawthorne? Alright, our next terrific teammate. KCPS has a team of social workers that work with our students throughout the school district. They help deal with major tragedies and also just provide an ear for staff and students to express their feelings. One of the best, as you heard earlier from Mr. Madri, is right here in this building, Mr. Jeffrey Dayton.
What makes Jeffrey Dayton a great person to work with is that every day he comes full of steam and he has a huge heart. This guy comes in and looks to put out any fire that's in your building. He doesn't say, "That's not my job." He jumps in wherever he sees needed or fit.
Well, I think that Jeff has gone beyond his call of duty in many cases. He is a person who is well sought after by his students and the people he works with. So to me, I think it's a perfect time that he be honored for this prestigious award.
Well, Mr. Dayton goes above and beyond for our students. He has a way with connecting with students and with families. He reaches out to the community to find additional resources to support our families at Central Middle and Central High School. We're just so blessed to have Mr. Dayton to be a part of the team.
Why he won the Terrific Teammate Award? I live it every day. He's one of the greatest teammates I've ever played with or ever worked with since I've been in the field of education.
And our last terrific teammate works tirelessly to make sure that KCPS is fully staffed with the best candidates. In a time when some districts may be seeing teacher shortages or are hard to fill some positions, KCPS is filling our positions at a rate higher than we ever have before. That's thanks in large part to Ms. Monica Landis.
Monica Landis is such a great person to work with, because when we go out and recruit, she's so relatable. She talks to everybody, she engages with everybody, and she just has a positive outlook on the district, and she's really fun to work with. In regards to human resources, everybody loves her, she gets along with everybody, and again, she's just a great person overall, and you can see that in the work that she does for recruiting, as well as the work that she does here at Patrons specifically.
That's Monica Landis. Before I turn it over to Samara Prophet-Herrera for our community champions, I'd like to say thank you to our team who put these videos together. Very quickly, very short notice, got out there, Mr. Luther O'Keo, our videographer and graphic designer, and also one of our interns, a Paseo graduate, Ms. Morgan Jones. Now, let's have Samara Prophet-Herrera.
Good evening. Right. Dr. Bedell, Board Chair Manter, members of the board, cabinet, and family and community members present. Please join me in the pleasure of honoring our community champion this evening, Ms. Ina P. Montgomery, founder and executive director of Urban Tech. KCPS honors community partners that uphold the legacy of service through trusting relationships and a passionate and unwavering commitment to equity, social justice, and educational excellence on behalf of students and families of KCPS. With a mission to bridge the digital literacy divide through the development of computer technology and 21st century knowledge and skills within urban schools and communities, Urban Tech is the embodiment of this honor. Focusing directly on digital literacy for workforce development, Ms. Montgomery has provided countless experiences and opportunities across this district. Offering STEAM labs in collaboration with local investment commission, Ms. Montgomery has facilitated countless engaging learning experiences within several of our elementary education schools. And let me tell you, the kids have the best fun while enjoying new materials with a caring adult as a guide. Ms. Ina, I forgive you for all of the countless amounts of child-produced slime across KCPS, including the backseat of my own car. Additionally, for our secondary students, Urban Tech has offered a variety of technology-focused field trips in coordination with everyone from Microsoft to UMKC. These field trips provide not only hands-on experiences to students exploring career fields and technology, but also a chance for tech professionals to mentor in an authentic environment with these students. And we know what an incredible opportunity it is for students to be able to recognize a pathway for their future in the eyes of a professional that looks, talks, and nerds out just like them. Ms. Montgomery, on behalf of the KCPS family, to include the countless administrators, teachers, students, and families you've engaged throughout your multi-year partnership with the district, we thank you for your relentless dedication to educational excellence through technological experience, and for your gifts of time, talent, and resources to KCPS. We thank you, Urban Tech.
Alright, Madam Chair, that concludes our portion of the presentations and recognition. At this time, we are ready to move forward with our board policy monitoring, and we will have Dr. Collier to come up and begin with, I'm sorry, I'm moving too fast. Board Policy 4.5 and 4.9. Our first presentation will be the monitoring of Board Policy 4.5. At this time, I'll pass it over to Dr. Collier.
Alright, good evening. Dr. Bedell, Board Chair Manter, board members, staff, students, parents, community. I am Jennifer Collier, Chief Human Resource Officer for Kansas City Public Schools, and I just wanna say, I, I too am very proud of the work that our talent acquisition manager, Monica Landis, has done in our department. She truly is amazing, and is very deserving of that Terrific Teammate Award. So really quickly, there are two policies that I'm covering this evening. The first is Board Policy 4.5, and this is aligned directly to our strategic plan, Pillar C, around strategic priority nine, which addresses capable empowered leadership. This particular policy is really all about succession planning. And our interpretation of that extends not just to the superintendent, but the goal here is to make sure that our, our district is never in a position where we don't have effective leadership ready to step in at any time. And so we've also extended that not only to the superintendent, but to executive-level leaders and leadership in the school buildings. So our key performance indicators for this particular policy include the leadership succession depth chart that you all received as in your notebooks, and then also, we're looking at leadership principal pipeline programs, the selection into those programs, and hiring into leadership roles. So for this current school year, there are fourteen executive-level leaders, and as identified on the depth chart that you received, all of the executive-level leaders have identified what we call a second-in-command, someone who is knowledgeable of the department and that can step in and fill that role, that leadership role, on an interim basis, basis at least, and potentially, long-term. We also are looking at our number of principals. We wanna make sure that we always have qualified principals ready to step into those leadership roles. We know that life happens, circumstances happen, and changes happen. And so in the case that there, there is a need for a change, we wanna make sure that we have leaders that are also ready to serve in the leadership roles in our schools. And so, we have thirty-five principals, and one of those principals is a part of the KC+ resident program. The KC+ program is a principal pipeline program, and I'm gonna talk a little bit about it more in depth in just a moment. But you will see, we also have forty-two assistant principals who are, who are also being groomed and trained and prepared to move into the principal role potentially. Four of our forty-two assistant principals are former KC+ residents, so they have fully completed that two-year program. Three of them are current plus residents in the second year, and then we also have sixteen additional KC+ folks who are part of the pipeline that are ready then to move into assistant principal roles. So this leadership continuity plan, this succession planning, consists of three components. The first is the interim basis, short-term, and this is the case, there's an emergency with our superintendent, there needs to be at least two people identified to step into that role on an interim basis, and that's identified on your depth chart. We also wanna look not just at short-term, but long-term. How are we preparing and grooming our leaders to move into leadership roles in our district? Whether that's the principal role, central office, leadership directors, assistant superintendents, and superintendent roles, so multiple key leaders are being groomed across the system. And then we also have a selection criteria as we look at folks who are being prepared for those leadership roles. We would like to see them have two years, at least two years of evaluation at scoring at proficient level. We also wanna make sure they have the appropriate educational accomplishments for the roles that they would be moving into. We are also looking at tenure and position, what types of experiences have they had in our system or even outside of our school system that would prepare them for a leadership role? And then also, a summary of their professional educator and administrator experiences. And that's both for our current staff and those who would be coming in. So some of our strategies around succession planning, as I stated before, second-in-commands have been identified, and so, we don't wanna just identify them on paper and say that we have second-in-commands. We, we actually wanna provide some professional development and further development opportunities for them. And one of those things are regular, ongoing executive team meetings, those occur once a month. The cabinet meets every Monday, and then the fourth Monday of the month is the executive team meeting where all second-in-commands are a part of those meetings, they're a part of those critical conversations, the planning that we're doing as a district discussing our initiatives, and so they, they remain abreast of the things that are important to us and that are priorities for us as a school system. We also have, annually, have our executive team retreat. Once again, our second-in-commands are a part of that as well. Just the last board meeting, we heard a lot about the Blueprint 2030, and so, in this upcoming retreat on October 11th and 12th, we will be engaging in conversation around that long-range planning, and our second-in-commands will be a part of that, that tied together as well. So once again, they are remaining knowledgeable and abreast of, of where we're heading as a system, where we are, what we want to accomplish, and then where we plan to go. We also instituted the Tier Two Leaders Meeting, and I just wanna state, because not only do I have Monica Landis here, I also have our Director of Staffing, Brenda Cyrus here, if you raise your hand, and she leads these Tier Two Leaders Meetings, and so, what she does is she makes sure that the information that we're getting at the cabinet level and executive level is then shared across districts, so it's not just vertical information sharing, but also interdepartmental information sharing, so that we close gaps around accomplishing our initiatives and making sure that everyone who needs to be a part of the conversations and needs to know what's going on are included in that. And so we have found those to be very beneficial as well. We're continuing our Focus Thursday and Friday trainings, and this is where we cover many of the compliance issues, the training that needs to happen around, for example, policy AC around harassment, discrimination, retaliation, making sure that our leaders are very knowledgeable in those areas. But in addition to those things, our compliance issues, we also want to make sure that we're infusing in our trainings equity in practice, which is a priority for our system, as well as culture of care. And that's something that Dr. Bedell wrote out earlier in this year, this idea of culture of care and what that looks like in practice. And so we'll be infusing those principles throughout all of the Focus Thursday and Friday trainings. We also have assistant principals meetings, and those are led by our school leadership team. Our assistant principals receive the same professional development that our principals receive on a different date, but they receive the exact same training. So once again, they are also being prepared, if necessary, to step into that lead principal role in their buildings. And so here's a little data around our KC+ program that I mentioned earlier. We started this program three years ago, partnering with the New Teacher Project and with UMKC. And once again, we have found that this program has been very beneficial. with UMKC, and once again, we have found that this program has been very beneficial for us. We have some excellent leaders that are coming out of this program, and I'm just really excited about the number of residents that we have ready then to move into leadership roles as necessary. But the very first cohort, we began with five residents, and we were primarily focusing on our secondary schools at that time. And so today, four of those from Cohort One have been assigned assistant principal roles for this current school year. For our second cohort, there are six residents, and one of them is actually a principal in one of our elementary schools. And then for Cohort Three, there are ten residents, and one has been hired as an assistant principal this year. An additional leadership program that will be led on by Dr. Shepherd in our academic division is the Executive Leadership Academy. Applications for that will be opening in October, and folks who are interested in becoming an assistant superintendent, primarily looking at our principal core group, they will have an opportunity to be trained and receive PD throughout the year in preparation to potentially move into an assistant superintendent role as those positions become available. Questions?
Want to open this up for questions or comments from any board members? I don't have a question, but I do want to comment about, this was one of the pledges that Dr. Bedell made when he was hired back in 2016, that we, there was a recognition that there were not clearly articulated pathways, nor the bench was not spelled out, such that in past times, sometimes one vacancy occurred for undue circumstances that was not clear how the next development of leaders was coming along. And so I want to commend you, Dr. Bedell, it was one of the things you stated as a priority when you came and you expressed a philosophy that you have a philosophy, I think, about growing and developing leaders, and sometimes they leave us, and you've talked about your pride in that. I don't know if you have any comments about that?
Yeah, it can be very painful, losing your people, but one of the things that I shared with the board and the community when I started was, I feel that two areas where I should be held accountable is, one, on, you know, how well do we advance the school system? Did we leave the school system in a better position than it was before we started? And then number two, how many people under your leadership have been able to move up within the ranks? How many people, in my case, are now superintendents and now making a difference and impacting far more students? And so we take pride in that, and I think that's something that our cabinet members also take pride in, is doing everything in our power to develop people that want to move up, and then understanding that, in that, we may lose highly qualified people, but then that we have a pipeline, and that's something that's important. So we have lost, they were talking about Molly Tickner today at the cooperating school district meeting, and now she's doing state-level work, but she was somebody that was in our system for the past couple of years. And then we're losing, Samara, I see you over here, but we're getting ready to lose her. But two very capable individuals that have been working with her, that we feel very confident would be able to continue to move the work forward within that division. And that's, so we take that very seriously, Madam Chair and members of the board.
Thank you.
And I would just like to add, too, that I think in the years that I've been here, I've never seen such transparency around what our initiatives are and what we're hoping to achieve. That presentation, it was easy to do because, once again, it's not just leadership on paper. It's one thing to put it on paper that you have second-in-commands, but what does that actually mean? But the way we function as a system under Dr. Bedell's leadership, that information is transparent and readily available to second-in-commands and even those who may not be a second-in-command. And so I think that as team members, we appreciate that as well, and those who are serving in those second-in-command roles are appreciating those opportunities to be further developed. So moving on, the second board policy that I will be addressing this evening is Board Policy 4.9, and once again, this is also tied to Pillar Seven. However, this particular policy is aligned more appropriately with strategic priority number seven, which deals with having a talented, dedicated workforce. And KCPS's interpretation of that, as we work to advance the school system and to allow the system to meet its board adopted end's objectives, primarily the work around the instruction that's happening in our schools, because that's the primary work of our school system, making sure that our students are growing and developing and learning. We focus primarily on our teacher core group, making sure that we have certified teachers, highly effective teachers. We want them to have basic competencies around organization, classroom management. Cultural competency is very important to us, and I'll talk a little bit about that later. And just ultimately, we want to know that they truly believe that all children can learn. We know that that's a quote, and many people say it, but we want to see it evidenced in our classrooms, and so that's something that we are focusing on as a system. So the key performance indicators that will be addressed in this presentation, there are quite a few here, that's the certification and education level of our classroom teachers that will be shared, also our teachers' years of experience in KCPS, and I'm going to differentiate that bullet number two and three. So we're looking at those who may be new to KCPS. It doesn't necessarily mean that they are new to education, and I'll talk about that when I get to those slides. And then also then teachers who are actually new to the field of education. I'll share some trend data around that as well. We'll also look at demographic data, student and teacher, around ethnicity and gender. We'll look at our recruitment data, our retention data, and then our vacancy rate data as well. So the RAN Corporation states, "Many factors contribute to a student's academic performance, including individual characteristics, family and neighborhood experiences, but research suggests that among school-related factors, teachers matter most." And so taking a look at our classroom teacher education and certification, you'll see, to date, and I would say these numbers do fluctuate as we make hires, as we add positions due to enrollment or take away, these numbers will fluctuate, but to date, we have a thousand fifty-nine teachers. Of that teacher group, four of our CTE teachers, I'm sorry, do not have a bachelor's, master's, ed specialist, or EDD or PhD. However, they come with work experience, and they're professional certificates which qualify them for the classroom. You'll see that the lion's share of our teachers hold bachelor's degrees, and then followed by those who hold master's degrees. When you look at the table just below, we're looking at the number- ... matters. And so when we look here at our student-teacher demographic data, it really tells a story on its own when you take a look at it. You can see the majority of our students are students of color, with fifty-six percent African-American or black, and then twenty-seven percent Hispanic or Latino. But when you look over on the teacher ethnicity side, you can see that the majority of our teachers are actually white, and fewer are teachers of color. And that is not surprising, because fewer and fewer people of color are going into schools of education, as well as people in general who are going into schools of education. Those numbers have been declining for years. And so we know that we have our work cut out for us as we work to have a more teacher core that's reflective of our student demographic. So here, this just kind of shows you that trend data around our students of color and teachers of color. Not much has changed in the last five years. We've been pretty static, about ninety percent of our students, students of color, and then thirty-seven percent of our teachers, teachers of color. While we have not moved, I'm very glad that we have not digressed there, especially given the teacher shortage that we have and the numbers of teachers of color that are significantly decreasing in schools of education across the country. But to provide a little more context for you, I think it's important, because sometimes we can beat up on ourselves and say, only thirty-seven percent, and we do want to improve there, but when you look at the state of Missouri, you can see the state of Missouri is sitting at nine percent teachers of color, and then the United States average is twenty percent. So it's an area where we want to continue to work, but we also want to celebrate where we are at this point. So once again, looking more further into teacher diversity, this is kind of getting into our gender. The female-dominated teacher workforce imposes norms of learning and behavior on all students that are developmentally appropriate for girls, but implicitly disadvantaged boys. This is Hanson and Quintero once again. So you can see the majority of our students are male, fifty-one percent, just slightly, but they are male, whereas when you look at our teacher core, the majority of our teachers are female. And so I didn't even layer in a race and ethnicity with that, but when you think about in an urban setting where many of our students are students of color and so few males present in the building, we know how important it is to have male role models in the building as well for our children. And so this is an area that we are focusing on in our HR department, really trying to recruit and attract males into education, and we try to do this through a number of ways, not necessarily looking at traditional schools of education, because in most cases they aren't there, but there are other avenues into education, and through some of our partnerships, we're able to help increase these numbers, and we are focusing on that as a department. So looking at teacher retention, I've often said, and I reiterate, that I do not think we have a recruitment problem. I think that what we experience more is a retention problem, and our data will reflect that in just a moment. Here, an additional quote, I love looking at research, what do the experts say about it? Jennifer has her thoughts about it, but those who are considered experts, what do they say about it? What they say is, "Teachers see much higher attrition than their peers in most occupations. Above thirty percent of college graduates who became teachers were not in the profession five years later, compared with fourteen percent of pharmacists, sixteen percent of engineers, and nineteen percent of nurses and lawyers." So we know that we have a retention issue as a country, not just Kansas City Public Schools, but just across the country, teachers are leaving the field of education, and so we have to make sure that we're doing all that we can to incentivize people to stay with us. And those are some things that we talk about quite frequently as a leadership team, and we've instituted some things to help us in that area. So here, looking at our four-year trend data, you can see, when we closed out last school year, we had a hundred and eighty-five teachers, two-hundred-and-five of them left, and that put us at an eighty-one percent retention rate. Once again, we stayed steady, but we do want to improve that. We want more of our teachers to remain with us. But I thought it was important also to break down those reasons for leaving, so you can kind of get some perspective around that. Forty-six of those people that left were retirees, one-hundred-and-twenty-eight of them were resignations, and then thirty-one were non-renewals. And so when we think about those resignations, we want to make sure that we're finding out why are people choosing to leave our system. We want to make sure we decrease that, and so we want to make sure that we're looking at that information, and we collect that data through our exit survey. And I'm going to share some of that data now. So what I did there is, I share with you what the statewide data says from their annual report, the reasons why teachers are leaving, but then on the right side, you'll see the KCPS exit survey data. And so they're listed in order of prominence, so the number one reason was lack of administrative support, the second was student behavior, and I want to say that one and two are actually very closely tied together, because when I read through some of that qualitative data, what people are saying is that they felt they needed more support with the student behavior, they didn't feel like they were getting that always. And sometimes that's a matter of perception, because we know that there's only so much that our principals can do as far as sitting in the classroom with teachers. They can't stay all day, but we have to make sure that our principals are putting systems and processes in place to support our teachers, so that they feel that they have that support when there are student behaviors. And so that's something that we're looking at through a number of ways. Part of that is what we do through the social-emotional with our social workers that are there in the building and other behavior support staff, but once again, we're continuing to look at that and to try to determine what are our needs as a system, so that teachers really feel supported. Then they also said lack of resources, and then finally, we had a good number of teachers that left for family considerations. There were spouses that were relocating due to jobs and things like that. We see quite a few of those. So those were the top four reasons cited through our exit survey data for why teachers left. So the teacher retention data ties directly then into the vacancy data. If we can hold on to teachers, we have less vacancies to fill. Once again, some of the research, turnover accounts for ninety percent of the demand for new teachers, exacerbating shortages and undermining academic progress. And then that was from the Learning Policy Institute, and then this other, high-poverty schools are hit the hardest. They find it harder to fill vacancies than low-poverty schools and schools overall. We know it's an urban system, we have many high-poverty schools, we are considered a high-poverty district. However, I was sharing with the team earlier that while that is the case, the data I'm going to show next sort of contradicts this a bit, and we are very proud that it does, and you heard a little bit about it earlier. And just very quickly, we made a phone call to a few of our neighboring districts to find out from them what their vacancy rates were. I will tell you, it's very difficult to get, Monica knows. She's been trying very hard to get those numbers, and they don't want to share, but the ones that have shared let us know that some of them started the year with fifty or more vacancies, which is pretty common for urban school systems. But when you look at our start-of-school teacher vacancy data, you can see how we have progressed over the last three years. In eighteen, we were at twenty-six vacancies at the start, we moved to thirteen, and this has been very intentional work that we've done as a department led on by Ms. Landis, and then this year we began with seven-point-four vacancies. I think the best part about this is that they were not- I think the best part about this is that they were not in our hard-to-fill areas. They were not our science in our math and special education. So we are very proud of, we don't want to have seven, but we are very proud that they're not in our core areas. And so we're going to continue to work, but it's cause for celebration. And so as a department, we are just elated that this is where we are currently, but continuing to work to fill the remaining vacancies that we have. So you've got a lot of data around our recruitment, our retention. What are we doing about it? So I've given you all that, so now what? So I'll talk a little bit about some of the strategies that we have implemented as a department and as a district. And as I've said before, this work is not just HR work, it's the work of the entire system. And I'm really proud that so many people on the team help out in this area. It's not just HR, there are other departments and I'll talk a little bit about that in just a moment. Well, actually, I can talk about one of the pieces now. When we look at this, I want to go back, that 7.4, there are two people from the Curriculum and Instruction Department that were very instrumental this year in helping us fill those vacancies. That was Marcelina Larios, our math coordinator. She made a personal effort, she took it on as a personal responsibility to help seek out math teachers and get those math teachers matched to the right schools in place. And as a result, we started the year with no math vacancies. I can say the same thing for science. Our curriculum instruction, Science Director, Dr. Philip Jones, did the same thing. They worked and they partnered with our recruitment team and they got it done. But it wasn't just us, it were other people in the district who helped do it. And that's one of the things that I appreciate, that the work, this hard work is not just left for HR, you figure it out. But everyone has some sense of responsibility in it and has played a role in this. So we continued our traditional college visits, going to universities. And so as of today, there are 37 university visits that are scheduled, going out to those fairs. And so we are really trying to focus in on visiting HBCUs, historically black colleges and universities, as we especially look at some of our teacher ethnicity data. We're also going out to Arizona State University and Texas State. As we want, we definitely want to attract more Latino educators. We know that that's one of our fastest growing student populations. And so we definitely want to increase those numbers. We know that there are some challenges, especially when we start looking at salary and pay rates. But that's something we're also actively working on so that we can be competitive and recruit some of these folks here to our school system. Another strategy for us is the teacher recruitment team. And this began in January and this has been huge for us. There are 15 teachers that are a part of this team. These are people who are in good standing in their schools, good evaluations, they're team players. And they went through a process of selection. And these teachers now accompany our team on recruitment trips. We've always had district-level leaders going and we've had principals to go and that has been effective. But who better to send out than the teachers themselves who can tell the real story? They're in the classrooms every day and they're able to answer those questions that teachers really want to know. And so this team of people, they have been very valuable to us. They are, they've been a part of our job fair, they're going out to visit schools with us. And so we're really excited about this new component. Also, we instituted something that we call Experience KCPS. So instead of just going out to schools, we're now inviting them to come to us because we want people to see who we are. And so people have ideas about who they think we are, what they've heard. But until they actually come here, and like you said, Ms. Wolfsey, coming into the schools and feeling what it's actually like, they don't know. And so we are inviting universities to come out to visit us where they have a chance to meet our senior leadership, they meet principals, they go visit our schools, they go into the schools, they talk to teachers, then they have lunch with some of our principals and teachers. Especially we try to match them with their area or their level so they can have conversations. Last school year, Northwest Missouri State came and we had their junior class. And so we're excited because the seniors are coming back this year. 60 of them attended. We also had multiple universities that were a part of this on a separate occasion and 16 attended. And then our Teach for America Corps came and nine attended. This year, you can see we have four events scheduled. Our very first one coming up September 19th and that's Northwest Missouri State. And we're looking forward to all of those who came last year to join us, as well as some of the junior class. You'll also see Lincoln Universities coming on November 8th. Where we had University of Missouri scheduled, the November 15th date is still tentative. And then we'll have multiple colleges and universities on November 25th. But we're really excited about this as well. Also, our KCPS Job Fair, which is one of our larger events of the year. This is where we invite the folks that we've gone out to colleges to visit and people who've expressed interest, those who have applied. We invite them to come in and to interview with our principals. We had a total of 141 candidates that came in last year. Fifty-four of them received blue cards. And blue cards are after a principal interviews, they feel like this person is, we really need to consider hiring. This is a very strong candidate in my opinion. If they receive a blue card, then they then move on to interview with our Curriculum and Instruction Team. And they also vet those candidates to determine, is this someone that we should hire? And they start also thinking about what is a good match, which school is a good match for these, for these people that are coming in. And then from there, we made 38 offers, early contracts, offers. And from that, 32 of those contracts were signed and returned. So we made 32 hires from that job fair. Well, we can't do it alone, just going out recruiting and having universities come in, we also rely on partnerships. So Teach for Poor America is one of those partnerships. And as I've said before, I'm really happy about the healthy relationship that we now have with TFA, where they are really helping us fill some of our hard-to-fill areas. And so this year, we have 17 Teach for America Corps members that have been hired and seven of them are filling some of our hard-to-fill positions. We also have the Kansas City Teacher Residency Partnership that I talked about earlier. And what I love about this particular program is that they seek candidates from our employee group. So some of our PARAs and other people who are wanting to become teachers but have had barriers that hinder them from moving into those positions, they are now having an opportunity to earn their teaching certificate, earn a master's degree, and then become a teacher in our classrooms. And so for this school year, we've hired seven of our KCTR Corps members from last year. And we have six new residents that are in our buildings now. And one of those hires for this year actually was in a hard-to-fill area. I also want to note that one of our Kansas City Teacher Residence Teachers was nominated for our Excellence in Education Awards. And they, and remember the Excellence in Education Award recipients to qualify for the award, they had to be in the top five teachers in their area as far as student achievement. And this was a KCTR person in his second year of teaching, was it second year? Was he second year or first year? Second year, second year of teaching. So we're really excited about that. Then we also have our MU Fellows, that's our partnership with MU. And these are students that are earning their master's degrees. We have four of these teachers and they earned their master's degree and they also teach in our schools full-time. We have two at Truce, one at Phillips, one at Trail Woods. And then this fall, we actually have seven student teachers and you can see the universities where they're coming from. You will see University of West Florida, I got that question earlier. That's a person who actually grew up around this area and goes to college there and they want to come back here to student teach. So we're really excited about that. They're hearing the good things that are happening here. These numbers will look different in the spring because there will be additional student teachers coming on board for our spring. But this is who we have this fall. Okay, looking at salary data, I've shared this before, but I think it's always good to look at again, especially as we have conversations around the need to improve our compensation package as we work to recruit and retain our teachers. One of the issues with our current schedule is that it almost feels like we are incentivizing our teachers to leave us or number one, not come, and then if they do come, to leave. Because other districts and other systems that are similar to ours are outpacing us in salary. However, when you look further down the schedule, those with more experience, we're doing very well and outpacing other districts. And so if people make it to that 10th year and moving on, then they're in good shape. But it takes a while to get there. And so we want to make sure that we start looking at the first few years of our salary schedule and looking at how we can improve those levels so that number one, we attract people. We make the salary offer one that's livable for people. And then we're able to retain people as well. We don't want to incentivize them to go somewhere else for more pay. Especially after we've invested time of professional development and training them and preparing them as leaders and then they go and serve somewhere else. We want them to stay right here. And so salary is one of the things that we're looking at for recruitment and retention. For our retention strategies, we're also looking at onboarding. Another piece of the research talked about that instead of putting money into the, investing in teachers later, you should invest on the front end. And so we're looking more at our onboarding process. How are we really preparing our teachers to be successful when they enter? We know that there probably will be challenges, but how can we minimize those? How can we make sure that they're equipped and ready? And so this new comprehensive three-phase onboarding, we have the orientation period, which is prior to their hire. And there's certain non-negotiables that will need to happen then. That first week of hire, which is the acclamation period, what are the steps, the things should happen then? What types of communication, what types of meetings, what types of things should be going on with that new employee? And we want to make sure it's standardized across the district. And then also the first 30 days of their hire, that cultivation period. At the end of the 30 days, HR then sends out a survey to capture how that employee is feeling about that first 30 days with us coming in, transitioning in, and then feeling about moving forward. And so you can see some of the details around that there, I won't go through all of them. We also have mentors for all of our teachers, our brand-new teachers coming in. And this is arranged by our Curriculum and Instruction Department, making sure that our teachers have the supports they need right on site, support from other teachers. And then we are, we are continuing with our quarterly check-ins where we're working in partnership with CIPD, Curriculum and Instruction, to check in. So there's a day that our new teachers meet with that team, they dig into curriculum and other things that they need as teachers. And then the very last hour is given to HR for us to check in with them, to see how they're doing and what their needs are and how we can support or intervene if necessary. Oh, and I do want to say that so far, some of the information that we've gotten from teachers has been really positive as far as their transition into the system. So we're really proud about that, the supports that they feel that they have as they come in this year. We also have Flex Wednesdays. And this is where, this is not time where the principals use for professional development, but this is the teachers' time to use as they wish. And I'm almost done, I see the glazed overlook. I can see it. I'm almost done, I promise. And so all those Flex Wednesdays, it's optional, but we, our Curriculum and Instruction Team does provide classroom management, professional development for those teachers, for those who really feel like they need that support. And then also, you all have heard plenty about the Teacher Institute, but this is another great feature that I think is helping to attract and really make our teachers feel prepared and ready to go for the year. Last year, we had over 500 attendees, this year, we had over 800. And so we're really excited about that and the positive feedback that we heard from teachers. And then if you remember, last year, we added a significant number of coaches, reading interventionists and math interventionists to also help serve in our schools. So there are various levels of support that we have for our teachers. I've talked about improving the compensation package. So in addition to those other things, we also want to make sure that we have opportunities for them to celebrate and to be recognized. And so we have a Teacher Rock Day coming up on October 18th. That's just a time for all the teachers to come together and just to have a good time together. And one portion of that time will be designated for just our first-year teachers, for us to check in with them and give them time to meet one another. We also, through our Education Foundation, the work of Nicole Collier-White, Cordish has sponsored two-year free-of-charge apartments at One Light and Two Light for one teacher each year. And so at the Teacher Rock Event, we will actually be announcing who that teacher is for our school system, who will get that apartment. I was hoping I could put my name in, but I can't. But this is, this was made possible through the SchoolSmart KC Grant. They gave us a $50,000 grant to allow us to, I'm sorry, not that particular one. That's for the Excellence in Education Awards. I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. So it's kind of out of order. But the annual employee recognition ceremony is a time where we recognize all of our employees because we know that people do want to be recognized for their service. And we're only able to recognize them every five years. So after you hit that milestone year, then you're invited to a wonderful ceremony. Dr. Badell. You're wrong. Okay. I thought he was saying he was tired. But it really is a wonderful elegant event and lets our employees know we value them. It's important, it's important to us that we say thank you to them for their service. And that's all of our employees. This past year, we included in the ceremony the Excellence in Education Awards. And this is where, this went to school-based staff. Teachers and classified staff members were recognized for their service and their work. And they received up to $10,000 in awards if they were selected. And so that was made possible through the SchoolSmart KC Grant, the $50,000 grant that they provided so we can have recognition of our teachers. We're also continuing our Teacher and Principal of the Year ceremonies where we're acknowledging the great work that our teachers and our principals are doing because every school is able to nominate a Teacher of the Year who gets recognized as well. And then finally, we have our KCPS Intramural Days that's coming up. We heard a little bit about it earlier. It will be here at Central High School, November 23rd. Just a lot of fun. As Dr. Badell always says, we work hard, but we also want to play hard. So that's a time for our staff just to come out, relieve some stress, have a good time, meet some other people who are engaged in this work with us, and just a way for us to let them know we appreciate them. And so we're looking forward to that Intramural Day. And I just want to make note, I want to remind everybody that last year, at the Intramural Day, the kickball tournament, you all remember what team won? That was Dr. Badell's team, I was on the team, anybody else on that team? We won. And by the way, I almost killed myself that day, but we won.
Dr. Slade did kill himself.
Dr. Slade did, he hurt his foot that day. But it was, honestly, it was a wonderful event. It was just a good time to see all the schools out there and really rallying together and just having a good time. And those who didn't want to do kickball did the Spades Tournament. I think Dr. Shepherd, you won that, didn't you?
I won.
She won. And no, it was not rigged. All right, questions?
Thank you so much. It was a really full but very informative presentation, so thank you. Dr. Jones?
I have, thank you very much, Dr. Collier, for that presentation. I had one comment and two quick questions. My comment is just, I'm very happy that you guys are taking a look at the diversity of the teaching staff and how it relates to students. Out on the road, I'm hearing a lot of concern from the community just about the makeup of teaching. And it's not just a KCPS issue, it's everywhere. So thank you all for taking a deep dive into that. So when you say that you're looking at the salary schedule, like do you, will we be hearing more soon about what next potential steps could be for that and what we'll be doing?
Yeah, so we're looking at some potential legislative fixes as we, as we work through that, setting goals for legislative priorities, what can be done at the state level. But then also looking at what we can do as a system to, and we've actually started that process. We've worked, Ms. Quinley, myself, and then our union president, Andrea Flinders. We have sat down together and worked. And last year, we did make some improvements to the schedule to improve those earlier years, but we have to keep doing it. And what happens is as we improve, other districts continue to improve. And so it's going to take a minute for us to catch up, but we're working every year to see how we can do that. And where we have savings sometimes in other places, then we put that into the schedule.
No, I appreciate that. And one of the reports that's been in the news lately is just that people of color have higher debt, student debt, when they leave school. And so that impacts who can go into teaching. So I'm absolutely looking forward to hearing and hopefully get some traction on that. And then the other question is, to what extent do you all feel like KCPS is able to influence UM and UCM, these places where there's a higher volume? Do you feel like they have been open to, so if I could say that differently, so you talk about having urban school districts like KCPS having to do a heavier lift on the backside when they're hired or right before they're hired. Do you find that the universities would be more open to you having a greater influence while they're going through their process? So that you can kind of, I don't know, I don't know if it makes a difference whether you're doing it before or after?
Well, I think there are a couple universities that we are actively working with to try to improve some things on the front end. And those would be MU, where we have connections with people there. Our former HR director now works for the Empor Program. And so that's actually a way in for us where she's actually working actively with us to communicate what our needs are as a system for teachers. And so then we are also working with UMKC. Actually, I sit on their strategic planning board and they're currently looking to revamp their entire teacher education program. And so one of the conversations that we have frequently is actually about how we better prepare teachers for their urban environment. We know that they had the Urban Institute and it was questions around its effectiveness, but they are really seeking to improve that program and better prepare teachers. Also through our, we meet with them regularly around student teachers and so we're able to have conversations with them. Dr. Trinity Davis and I are also a part of the US Prep partnership with UMKC. And so we meet with them regularly as well to talk about how they can better improve their program so that teachers coming out can be successful in the urban corps because they also realize that there's more that needs to be done. But I would say right now, those are the two universities that we are, I feel like we're able to impact.
Thank you.
And I do want to add to that because I believe it was the first year I was here and we went and spoke to the students in the College of Education over at UMKC. And one of the things they said was, you know, you guys are in our backyard and this is really your first time even coming here and talking to our students. So from there, we started this relationship around really being a true thought partner in the redesign of their urban education program. And that is the US Prep work that we're doing. So we're making progress in that area, but it is our, it is our school, it's our backyard school. school. As we continue to do the work that we want to do with our own Grow Your Own initiative, we want to hopefully have some of our students feed right into U M K C and then come back. And so, there's one student in particular that has, I think she's a junior this year, graduated from Southeast High School, that's on our radar. She works with Link right now, and you know, we'll see how that pans out, but I know that she actually wants to come back and become a teacher in the school district, and she was one of the first students that we really engaged in this, in this particular process.
And another thing I didn't mention in the presentation, that we have started, actually, for our students who have expressed an interest in education and are going to school for education, we've actually started giving out letters of intent to those, to those students and those families, and bringing those families in, and really making it a nice event for them, saying, once you graduate, we will hire you, you've graduated from this system, you're going into education, we'll support you as you go along with what you need, if you, you know, need to do classroom visits or whatever, we're here to help you with those kinds of things, but once you graduate, we want you back here. And so, they were really excited about that. Yes, just recently, there was another student that's a junior, a black male, who was, who was a graduate from here, who we gave a letter of intent to, we met with him maybe a couple weeks ago, and so he was just super excited that we would even offer that to him, and that he knows he has a job with us once he's completed his program.
And the beautiful thing is, in that letter, we also talked to them about, once you hit sixty hours, you can come back and you can, you can become a substitute teacher, you can come back and you can be a para. There are other things that you can do that can allow for you to still earn income and get some in-the-field experience before you ever even get to your student-teaching phase of your development.
Ms. Wolfsee?
As always, thank you for the presentation. I have a couple of, one's just a really simple question, but on page, I think it's fifty-eight, it's the one about why teachers leave, and you talk about exit survey data. Do you know what percent of our resigners actually complete the exit survey? Like, do you have a hundred percent?
Well, I can tell you numbers, so ninety percent of the two-hundred, I mean ninety of the two-hundred-and-five teachers that left completed the exit survey data. So we do have challenges around them completing, because it's optional, we send it out electronically, they can send it back or not, but we know that we have received ninety of them back for last school year, of that two-hundred-and-five.
Okay. One of the other things I was going to let you know that I had learned recently, that I actually think, maybe you don't think of being one of your things that retains newer teachers, I was talking to someone who teaches in another district, and I guess our fact that when the teachers kind of hit the ground running, and we have curriculum and it's all planned out, and like, the pacing guide, your curriculum's available on day one, you know, it's all there, that's not necessarily the case across this metro area, and to me, being a new teacher with so many things that I'm trying to have to learn classroom behavior, management behavior, all that, having that available and people who can be there as your support, either that mentor teacher, or the people that I know are pushing into, I think is another, one of the things that actually helps us retain teachers.
I think you're, you're absolutely correct. There are just a number of system changes that we're making, and you're right, it's sometimes those little things that make a difference for people, but as we improve systems across the district, I think we're going to see more and more teachers choosing to stay with us, and we know that that work is already happening.
My, my thought is that word about that tends to then start to get around to other people about, if you are a new teacher, this is what you get when you go to Kansas City Public Schools.
Yep, and Monica and her team, they share all of that, and she's working on a brochure where it outlines, these are all the reasons why you need to come, this is all the things that we offer here as a system. And so, we want to make sure that, as we go out to recruit, that we are also telling that story, and making that clear to those coming out of school. She did mention that the TFA Fair, was it TFA Fair, where there were lots of districts represented, they had just like an opening where they talked with all of them, and then they released them to go to whatever district they were interested in, and she was just sharing with me how almost all of them flock to Kansas City Public Schools, they all wanted to come to us. And so, we're seeing that shift, where instead of being that place, that not being a destination place, we are now that, where people are running and wanting to be a part of what we're doing.
But that, that is also contrib, you have to contribute that too, to the fact that there's, there's a different level of stability. I think there's a stability with the board, there's stability with leadership, and really in this area right now, instead of it being KCPS where we are unstable, there's other districts that surround us where there's a lot of instability. And the truth is, people want stability. They want stability, they want to believe that they're being treated fairly, they want to believe that they're going to be able to grow and move, and you saw that in the presentation, even from the number of teachers who attended the Teacher Institute last year, which was around five hundred to over eight hundred teachers, over eighty percent. Now, that happens because those teachers who attended that first year went back and told their peers, this was worth your time, you need to come. And I think that's the other thing that's helping too, in addition to our strong recruitment team, is that we also have teachers out here that are going out and telling people, you know, this is a good opportunity, and you need to, you know, come and really take a look at the school district. So it's helping us.
I would agree. I think stability is very important, I don't mean to piggyback everything you say, Dr. Bedell, but you're right, that stability is so important, I mean, when I look at just HR, and my team know, when I first came in, the running joke was that, if you sit in that seat, you won't be here next year, because H, the HR leader was, it was like a revolving door, and when I came in, there were so many gaps in HR, but it had to be, because there was no one there long enough to actually implement, or if they implemented, they left, and then things stopped, and then someone else came. And so, it was just no stability, and it was, it was very difficult to put systems in place, but I think I proved everyone wrong, I told them I was going into the office, and I was sitting in the seat, and I would be there the next year, and I'm now moving into my fifth year. And I would say that every year, I learned something new, like you would think, okay, I have it all learned now, but there's so many intricacies of this school system, that even this year, there's some new things that I'm learning, and about systems that need to be in place. And so, I'm really proud of the work that we've done, but we know as a team, we still have more to do.
Did you have a comment, Mr. Shepherd?
Hi, Dr. Collier.
Hello. How are you?
Good. Hey, thank you for the presentation, as always, I appreciate the, the way you put a narrative together, and then at the end, you answered a lot of the questions that I might have had without those answers, so thank you for the thoughtfulness of the presentation. I'm curious about the recruitment piece as it relates to people, you know, teachers of color, and you talked about the HBCUs that you're visiting, and I think that's one element. I wonder if there are additional strategies that you can employ there that would be, you know, complimentary to that? And sort of in a similar fashion, you know, specifically male teachers of color, because that number is really, really low. And I don't, I don't have an answer here, but I'd be curious to know what your thoughts are.
Yeah, so, I think, in my opinion, what we've seen to be helpful in addition to going to HBCUs is also those partnerships. So where I was talking about Kansas City Teacher Residency Program, many of the teachers in that program, they are candidates of color. Once again, they recruit from this area, and they also recruit from our district, so quite a few of the folks who are now teachers were pairs in our school system. They were already familiar with our students, the culture here, the classroom, and so the learning curve for them is much lower, and many of them actually matriculated through our schools, and they wanted to be teachers, but there were barriers there. We're going through the KCTR program, it has allowed them to now be in our classrooms, and we can see significant numbers of teachers of color through that. So it's going to take a while for us to continue as new cohorts come through, but we're gradually building through that process, and of course, we're going to seek other ways to do that. Because I don't know if, if looking at traditional, a traditional college visits will do it all, because once again, oftentimes, or in many cases, the research is showing they're not even going into schools of education.
Yeah, I mean, it's a good point. The other thing that's a broader community issue that, that's, I probably shouldn't even bring it up, but there's a broader community issue. So if I'm a young black professional coming from Atlanta, for example, or DC, and I get recruited to Kansas City to work, I get here, and I may love the job and the people that I work with, but then I don't really have a professional black community in Kansas City, there's not a culture of that here as much, and so what do I do outside of going to work, right? So people leave, because they want to go back to areas where there are professional, you know, people of color and greater of interest that we have here in Kansas City. So, yes, it's a problem to solve, I can read you.
Thank you, Dr. Collier. I got, this was a terrific presentation. I know that through the Missouri School Boards Association, we have been presented a couple of times now with reports from the state, from Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, that are warning school districts in Missouri about the teacher shortage and the slowdown of young adults pursuing education. So this is a, you are working in a highly competitive environment, and this is a particular challenge, I think, that Missouri is facing. At the same time, I think that there is increasing call for state leaders to look at reexamining how they fund public education in this state, so that we can fully reward teachers and educators in the way that they need. So, but the work you're doing on the ground is really yielding results, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
The next item of business will be for Dr. Bedell to discuss upcoming business items.
Thank you, madam. So there's two items that we will bring to the board next month, and these are closeout contracts for the eighteen-nineteen year to reconcile some of our special education services, both with the employee-based services in Sherwood for special education. We will bring that to the board in two weeks.
Thank you. Before we adjourn, there was one item that I wanted to share with the community, that the Kansas City School Board will hold a public tax levy hearing on Monday, September twenty-third, at five-thirty PM. This is part of a state requirement that we have before completing and adopting the district's levy, that we are obligated to hold a public hearing to allow for public comment. So for individuals who are here, and those who are watching via live stream, that meeting has been publicly noticed, and we will be meeting at the Board of Education on Monday, the twenty-third, at five-thirty PM. With that, I think that concludes our meeting for this, for this evening, so thank you.